Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Lipowski and I'm Chair of the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act Alliance. Welcome here today to our event to mark the 30th anniversary of the birth of Ontario's grassroots, nonpartisan campaign for a strong and effective Disabilities Act to tear down the barriers that impede 2.9 million Ontarians with disabilities from being able to fully enjoy all that Ontario has to offer. Thirty years ago this Friday, on November 29th, 1994, feels like it was yesterday, 30 of us, or pardon me, 20 of us happened to be in a committee room in this building where public hearings were being held on a Disabilities Act that an opposition member, Gary Malkowski, had introduced. The hearings got our blood boiling because we got a lot of platitudes, but not much more. We ended up storming down the halls. Somebody got a meeting room lined up. Word got out that we should meet. And the next thing you know, our campaign, our movement, was born. Thirty years later, tens of thousands of tweets later, endless number of email updates later, a gazillion meetings with politicians, meeting with political staff, meeting with municipal politicians, interviews with reporters, individuals writing columns for the paper or letters to the editor, grassroots efforts from one end of Ontario to the other, nonpartisan efforts. And we're celebrating our 30th anniversary. So where have we come? Where are we at? Well, there's some good news and there's some bad news, and then there's some hopeful news. The good news is that after 10 years of advocacy from 1994 to 2005, we won the unanimous enactment of Canada's first accessibility law, the AODA. At least five other provinces have followed suit, as well as the federal parliament. And it all started 30 years ago this Friday. Now, those other provinces, those laws were inspired by Ontario, but sought by grassroots advocates in other parts of the country. And over these 30 years, we've built Ontario's biggest, broadest, most inclusive cross-disability grassroots movement in the history of this province. We've also won recognition in every provincial election since 1995. Any party that made election commitments on this issue made them to our movement in letters to us. And we did win some improvements to accessibility. Things are better here than they were. But that may be the good news, but there's bad news. The bad news is that we were promised an accessible province by January 1st, 2025, and we are nowhere close. That's not just the experience of people with disabilities from across the province. It's the conclusion of successive government-appointed independent reviews of the Disabilities Act. Anybody who lives with a disability knows that there's some areas where there've been improvements, and yet there are new barriers being created against us every day. So, to sum, that means it's bad news. We tried and we failed. But now let me get you to the hopeful news. The AODA is not going away on January 1st. It remains the law, the law the government must obey. We are going nowhere. This is our 30th anniversary of tenacity because we're not stopping, we're not slowing down, we're gonna speed up. There is an election expected, if not next year, then the year after, and by all rumours, it's gonna be this spring. In this ninth election in a row, we will write the political parties and list what we want them to do in the spirit of nonpartisanship to commit to get us to the goal of the Disabilities Act as close as possible to the deadline of the Disabilities Act. What are we gonna ask for? Well, we'd like to hear from you today. This is your opportunity to speak to us and to members of the legislature. All four parties have said that they're gonna send an MPP. Two of them are gonna be coming a little later, but we're gonna be ready to start talking now. We wanna hear what you have to say to them, and we wanna build on your experience as we formulate our demands that will be coming out by the end of this year or the start of next year. So this is our big opportunity to do, well, to turn the tables on what happened 30 years ago. 30 years ago, we listened to hearings. This time, we're organising the public hearings. We thank the NDP for giving us this space in the spirit of nonpartisanship. We've invited representatives of all the parties. And I wanna pass, I wanna invite for just a brief introductory remark my good friend Ruth Ann Onley, widow of the late former Lieutenant Governor David Onley, to bring us words of welcome. And then I'm gonna pass control over to our moderator, Rob Latanzio. Ruth Ann?
Glasses, I can't see with them, I can't see without you. All your pain will help. I know David would have been here. It means so much to me for you to honour the memory of my beloved husband, David C. Onley, at today's community public hearings here. David was a man of faith, and God blessed him with a terrific sense of humour, a positive, tenacious, optimistic, can-do attitude, and a collaborative spirit. David's favourite little childhood book was The Little Engine That Could. "I think I can, I think I can, I think I can." Only with David, he always said, "I know I can, I know I can, I know I can." David dedicated his entire life to making Ontario a barrier-free province for all people with disabilities. In early 2019, David told the Senate that it is only through the enactment and effective enforcement of a strong Disabilities Act that an accessible society will be achieved. In his final report of the third independent review of the AODA, and I will quote David's own words today, he said this, "This province is mostly inaccessible," concluding, he said this, "For most disabled persons, Ontario is not a place of opportunity, but one of countless dispiriting, soul-crushing barriers." He said, "The pace of change since 2005 for people with disabilities has been glacial. As of 2019, the promised accessible Ontario is nowhere in sight," end of quote. David loved symbolism, and during his term as Lieutenant Governor, he had a painting of Saint George the Dragon Slayer, it's just down the hall up here now. I just looked at it, hanging in his own office. David was not one to quit, nor should we. I can hear him saying today, "Together, let us continue to slay the dragons of discrimination by breaking down barriers for the disabled." I can hear David saying, "I know we can, I know we can, I know we can. Be tenacious, I know we can. Keep up your advocacy, I know we can. Speak truth to power, I know we can." Thank you.
Welcome, Rob Latanzio, Executive Director of the Fantastic Arch Disability Law Center.
Thank you, welcome, everyone. Well, thank you so much, Ruth Ann and David, for your wonderful remarks. Thank you, Ruth Ann. We're so thrilled to have you all here with us today. Thank you so much for joining us. I am absolutely honoured to be here with you today. And I will be moderating this panel, which will be growing in a little bit of time. So I joined in congratulating the AODA Alliance on its tireless advocacy and nonpartisan grassroots advocacy. Arch Disability Law Centre is a strong and active supporter of the grassroots campaign for accessibility for persons with disabilities across Ontario. So I would like to now take a couple of minutes to explain how our panel will proceed this afternoon. So first, I'm going to invite each of the four members of the provincial province. Right now, we have two with us. We hope to get to four very soon. And our NDPs will introduce themselves for one minute. And we wanna do that so that we have time for all of you to speak. We wanna make sure that you all have some time. So I thank you again, to you both, for being here with us today. Then we will jump right into the presentations, in person and online. We have some folks joining us online. So we have ASL interpretation and captioning provided. So I do wanna just gently remind everyone who's speaking to just state your name right off the top, and please speak at a pace that allows our accommodation providers to keep up. So perhaps a little slower than what I'm, my pace right now, so I apologise. And we also have some AODA Alliance volunteers throughout the room here. Thank you so much for volunteering today, for making this possible. If you need any help to find a washroom or anything else at all, we do have water and coffee in the other room. Please just indicate that you need some assistance, and I'm sure they'll be happy to help you. And so I'll jump right into the guidelines for this afternoon. So we have some clear guidelines for you. We wanna make sure that all of our presenters have time to speak. So each presenter has up to three minutes today. You don't have to use the entire three minutes, but you're welcome to do so. I will, actually, we'll have a sound that will ring 30 seconds before your three-minute presentation is over. So we'll have our wonderful ASL interpreters will also indicate that, and I will raise my hand as well. So that'll be a sign that you have about 30 seconds left. And again, in order to make sure that everyone has an opportunity, I will indicate at the end of the three minutes that your time is up. And we have a couple of things that we've also set up to make sure everyone has some time. So our wonderful NDPs joining us today have agreed not to ask you any questions, just to make sure that you have time. And vice versa as well. Means we won't have time, so we're not going to have any questions from the floor to our NDP's either. So we're really just here to listen and to learn. So please remember, this is a public event. This will be recorded, it's streamed on YouTube, we have folks here on Zoom. So just keep that in mind if you are wishing to share any information that may be private or confidential. It is a public event. And given the nature of the event, we, again, won't be answering any questions, including any legal questions. So if you are needing legal advice, Lauren is smiling, yes, I'm going through my list of disclaimers and all of that, but we won't be providing you with legal advice. But we would be so happy to speak with you at Arch Disability Law Centre. Should you have any legal needs, wish to get some advice, please do give us a call for free, legal, confidential advice. And if we can't help you with your matter, we'd be happy to give you some information and some referrals as well. And our website is archdisabilitylaw.cmo. So our topic today is accessibility for people with disabilities in Ontario. All presenters told us in advance what topic they wanna present on. And we kindly ask everyone to sort of just notice in here that the speaker is on a very tight, yeah, it's working, okay? Just asking everyone to please keep to your theme, please, so we have your theme. And thank you again for your interest in presenting today. So the two questions that everyone has been asked to talk about are, "What disability barriers do you still face?" "And what should the government do about those barriers?" So as we keep those questions in mind, I will announce, so we have our lovely first two speakers here ready to go at the table in front of us here. And as we continue, I will call on folks to just get ready and get to the table as we have other presentations going, just so we can move things along. So I'll just be calling out names either online or here in the room. And we just hope that we can give you enough time to get in position. And so on, again, our volunteers are here to help you if you need it. For presenters taking part online, again, when I alert you that you are coming up soon, please just turn on your microphone. Otherwise, those of you presenting online should always keep your microphones turned off until I call your name. And finally, yet again, please remember that this event is being livestreamed to the public on YouTube and will later be archived there as well. This is all a public event. And so with that, I now would like to turn it over to our EPPs for a one-minute introduction. So I'd like to start on my left with Daisy Way, who's the Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister for Seniors and Accessibility. Thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Queens Park, and thank you for taking your time and sharing with us. We are here to listen to you. I am the ECY Parliamentary Assistant to the Honourable Raymond Cho, Minister for Seniors and Accessibility. It is a pleasure to be here to mark the 30 years since the start of the movement that sparked the development, enactment, and implementation of what became the first of its kind, accessibility legislation in both Ontario and Canada. On behalf of the government, I'd like to thank the accessibility advocates everywhere for their efforts in not only bringing the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act to life, but for continuing to help make our province more accessible each and every day. Thank you, David, for sharing with us the good news, the bad news, and the hopeful news. And I also like to share some good news with you. In 2021, a survey from Impulse Read showed that 88% said that Ontario is more accessible compared to only 42% said that in 2011. We know project by project, community by community, we still have a lot to get done, and I agree with you. And we have been diligently following the advice from our late Lieutenant Governor, David Onley. Thank you very much, Ruth Ann, for coming and sharing your remarks with us just now. We abide to what he said. He said, "The best thing we can do to make sure there is good paid jobs and meaningful training for people with disabilities." And we've been doing that, and we've been asking companies to work with us to support the people with disabilities. As you know, accessibility is an ongoing and collaborative journey, and I agree with Dave that we still have a lot to do. It requires work with many stakeholders at all levels of government. And while it seems it's a daunting task, when AODA was passed, it was done so unanimously for all parties. We will continue to do that. I would have to say, actually, we have 444 municipalities. They already have their accessibility plan. And we also have 758 million investments into 55 new subway cars, 560 million into 16 new streetcars. We have a new procedures room for all the new buses. We give 1.4 billion to school buses, and a lot is still yet to be done, I understand that. But we will continue to work with you. Today, I'm here to listen, to get all the things that you tell us, and I'll write it down, and will pass on, we'll do it as a continuous procedure, project by project, communities by communities. We all will work together to get it done, and thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Liz Beaujoie. I'm the MPP for Thunder Bay Superior North, and I'm also the official opposition critic for seniors and accessibility and for WSIB and injured workers. I'm not going to say a lot because we're really here to listen to what you have to say. Just a heads up that we do have a bill that will be coming forward that is a really revision of the Worker Safety Insurance Act, much needed. With that, let's hear what you have to say, thank you.
So let's get going, if everyone is ready to go. We have our wonderful first two speakers here, ready to go. So we will begin with Abbas Qureshi, and you have three minutes.
For a mic or anything?
Please go ahead. Will you get a mic? I'll go upstairs, you should be okay. You have one on the table as well.
I like this hand. All committee members, good afternoon, disabled committee. Hide yourself on back. We have the AODA in action. My name is Abbas Qureshi. Today, I'm gonna tell you about a situation that happened to me. Picture this. A person with a disability, moi, going to work, and then a door which was a kitchen hit me because the door was not accessible. Think to yourself, how? How did you get injured? I got injured, ladies and gentlemen, twice. What did the management tell me at the time? They told me, "Your bed from the kitchen." Think of that. Is that the way to treat people with disabilities at work? I was there first day when this ODA came in, whatever David suggested. You brought back a good memory, David. I have to say, a person gets injured on the job, the employer's responsibility is to look for the safety of its employee, especially a person with a disability. And in my case, I got nothing. We say that the AODA is impactful when it comes to talking with something that has teeth that can bite them. But the problem is, the organisations today, they have teeth, but they don't know how to fight it when it comes to legislation. We need to hold these companies responsible. When it comes to our safety, accommodation is key to getting a job, to being in a safe place. That's why we're all here today, to stand up to this government right now and saying with all three parties that enough is enough. We people with disabilities are here to stay, and we need to make this law better. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren McDonald. I am a lawyer supporting people with disabilities, a disability awareness trainer, and an instructor at the Lincoln Alexander School of Law at Toronto Metropolitan University. I want to discuss the right to accessible healthcare, which isn't negotiable. As a member of the AODA Healthcare Standards Development Committee, which provides best practices for the care of people with disabilities, I've seen firsthand how Ontarians face significant barriers to accessing essential medical care. The 2022 Canadian Survey on Disabilities released last year stated nearly 2.5 million Ontarians live with one or more disabilities. Nearly 450,000 Ontarians have a hearing disability. I am one of them. I want to share my experience in accessing healthcare. For us, medical interaction can be dangerous and traumatic. Imagine trying to communicate symptoms through mouth that muffle speech and block lip reading, straining to hear your name in a waiting room, or struggling to understand crucial medical instructions in a noisy hospital environment. Add inaccessible intercom systems, virtual platforms, and critical information provided only verbally, it becomes overwhelming. I can attest to all this over the past few years. I changed what I could, but persistent barriers sometimes cause even strong self-advocates like me to break. These aren't mere inconveniences. They lead to misdiagnosis, medication errors, and compromised care. The COVID pandemic only intensified these barriers. Our committee began its work in 2017, empowered through the pandemic, submitting our final recommendation report on February 28th, 2022. Nearly three years later, we still await the desperately needed regulation. I am heartbroken that one of our members, disability advocate Sam Sabona, died last August without seeing his meaningful contributions realised. The solutions exist. Our committee spent years developing them. What we need now is political will and public demand. With nearly 2.5 million Ontarians living with one or more disabilities, these barriers impact entire families and communities. Contact your MPPs, demand action on our recommendations, and support disability advocacy organisations. Let's build a healthcare system that truly serves all Ontarians. Thank you, Mary Lee Nittart.
Just a couple of quick notes. So we have Brian Ellison here. I'd also like to call Chad Bernard as well to come up. And while I do that, I just want to make mention that we are now joined by Ashley, Ashley, my CMTP, Ashley Classic from the Blue Party, say welcome. And we're, we just started, we're in our turn presentation. So Brian Ellison, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um Ruth Ann, it's really nice to actually see you here. I've, I, um Mr. Ronley was one of my mentors through trying to understand disability. Um I became fully disabled in twenty sixteen. And what I wanted to speak about today really just has to do with our healthcare system and how the intersection of healthcare is rife with systemic ableism. I myself was caught in the healthcare system in the spring of this year. It was surprising to me how many major hospitals, even in the Toronto setting, were not equipped, nor could they deal with accessible rooms with accessible washrooms. Uh that became um a crisis. They could not find me a room in a rehab facility. And consequently, my complications got worse and I contracted other airborne diseases in the hospital. My concern is with the inequities in the hospital system and how that's uh not being addressed. Um I now sit on a patient family equity uh committee at Sinai Health. So I'm hoping to bring light uh to a, a, a place that is inadequate. I, my other concern, I guess, that I want to bring forward is I understand that January first, twenty twenty-five will be the date set by the AODA. My question is, who's going to be the ombudsman or the uh who's going to be responsible for taking the complaints of non-accessibility? As I have moved through the last few years and noticed that most of the businesses and services within the Toronto sector are not nearly, are not ready, nor have they made any efforts to change the bill in their businesses to accommodate people with disabilities. My question will be, as e-scooters and e-bikes continue to haunt our streets, uh it's becoming a war zone for those of us with uh wheelchairs or devices to get through the streets as it is. But now we have the complications of e-bikes and e-scooters. My question is, who's policing it? If they're illegal in the city of Toronto, who's, who's responsible for making sure that we're safely able to use the streets and sidewalks? It's become a barrier and is now a concern for safety. Um and as we age, uh we're saving the healthcare system by still being able-bodied somewhat with our, our devices. We need some guarantee that this will uh be monitored at least by the AODA. That's, that's about it.
We have Louise Bar with us now, who'll be presenting. And I'd like to call up Penelope Leclerc. So Louise, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for listening to us today and thanks for organizing this, David. And it's good to see so many people here. I actually became involved in the AOD movement, thanks to David, back in the nineties. So I have seen this pretty much since in September, Ontario. And I started using wheelchair in the mid-nineties. First of all, okay, transit's a problem. Using human rights, I managed to get access to some public transit. But one of the things I find incredibly interesting is even today, I'm still running into barriers on public transit. I think what's more, what's upsetting is that, first of all, if you think about being an able-bodied person versus being a person with a disability, I try and ride public transit. If I want to get on the TTC in Toronto and I want to go to Mississauga, I can go and make a transfer very smoothly and carry on my way. I don't have to prove I have enough of a disability to qualify for paratransit. There is fair parity and so on, that makes it easier. With the AODA, my understanding is that was a promise that we were going to get, that it would be easy to do that. So to go from Toronto to Mississauga, I have appointment tomorrow in Mississauga and I cannot use the paratransit in Mississauga because I have to register with them first. Then I have to try to get pair, pair, parity, or sorry. I, I think with Still's case with Trans Health, that I have to pay ten rides in advance in order to even use their service. Thankfully, there's no snow and one go up and go train and use the my-way bus. And with any luck, there will be nothing I will run into in the way of barriers. Other things I've run into is if I get on a conventional bus, a TTC bus, or many of the buses within through the province of Ontario, I do go around a lot of different cities. They don't secure your wheelchairs unless you request it. The thing is, there was a bad accident the other day, about two weeks ago, or a week ago, actually, where a car, stolen car, hit a TTC bus with enough impact that spun at one hundred and eighty degrees. And if I was on that bus with my four hundred pound wheelchair, I shudder to think what kind of projectile I would have become and who would have been hurt from that alone and the damage. I think this wheelchair is my seat when I'm in a bus. It's an extension of myself, but it's also a seat. I think consideration needs to be given for that so that when I get on a vehicle, I don't have to ask to have my wheelchair secured. I just, it's done and that's the end of it. Standardization of the tie-down loops would really help because then all transit providers could start coming up with ideas on how they can maybe make an automated system. Right now, they can't do that because of the various differences in our chairs and the safety of them. Just some thoughts for consideration in future. But I do see another issue. I use WheelTrans almost exclusively now because I do have concerns about my safety. I don't have an easy time getting and securing my wheelchair anymore because a lot of drivers stay behind their, their plastic barrier and I can't get their attention to even lift the seat so I can sit on it. Some attitude is no one disability against the other. So they won't necessarily move someone, they might be invisible, I see that. And so they, they don't get the space empty for me to park. I can't raise the seat, driver needs to do that. Finally, with WheelTrans, with the bike lanes, which we just got alluded to, problem has been that there's an infrastructure to create protected cycle tracks. It's protected for people with cycle, bicycles. But if I have to get out mid-block, which I've had to do recently, I've had to go all the way down, down the bike lane, the road, to get to a curb cut, to get back to the business I'm going to. It far exceeds. Now, I have a power chair, I can do it. But I can't imagine if I went in a manual chair or with trouble walking, going that extra distance. So these are things that need to be considered. And there is no way to even deal with issues such as Presto card not working. There's, that's a new issue I'm running into. And I know what it is, it's a software issue, but it's Presto versus TTC and nobody coming together to figure it out. There needs to be oversight, there needs to be enforcement, and there needs to be some of these safety and dignity considerations taken into, into consideration. Thanks again for listening and I hope some of this is helpful to you and to the community.
Sandra Bird, and we will now hear from Penelope Leclerc.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We, we can hear you. So we're just going to hear from Penelope Leclerc and then we'll, we'll call you soon. You can leave your microphone on. Uh we'll, we'll get to you in about three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Sandra.
Benny?
Good afternoon. I'm Penelope Leclerc and I am deaf-blind. The statistics, six Canada in two, two thousand twenty-two indicates that two percent of the population in Ontario over the age of eighteen are deaf-blind. So that's three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two people in Ontario. That's over half of the population of deaf-blind people over the age of eighteen of all of Canada. So if Ontario has so many people and they have a lot of all-ting taxes and we have that many people, we should be able to do more monetarily, if not in any other way. But we're not doing so well. The most significant barrier for me has nothing to do with accessibility committees and nothing to do with municipalities in, in general. Because my disability being a hearing and sight loss significantly means I need people to help me communicate. That has nothing to do with municipal type things. The, the agencies in Ontario that receive funding, get it from MCCSS, the Ministry of Community Children, children and social services, which is, I'm an adult and this is not a social service. It's not even near a social service at all. It's, it's an important type of service and it should be under the Ministry of Health, not where it is. And that ministry does not have a cost of living increase. So the agencies are not getting a cost of, in, in, uh the cost of living increase, but most other ministries are, particularly the Ministry of Health. So how do you expect the agencies to continue to give us good services when you're not giving the cost of living allowance to the agencies that are trying to provide the services? So what's happening? You can go where you want to go. You can do what you want to do, but left behind, deaf-blind people are left behind. And I wouldn't be so proud of that. It's disgusting. We can do better and we should be doing better. We're supposed to be Ontario leading the way. Well, let's lead the way then. You have so many studies. And we keep having studies and it comes out with recommendations, but none of the recommendations are being implemented. But we always will have another study. It's time to stop talking and studying and start to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Benny. So we will now have our presentation from Sandra Bird. If you can please turn on your, your video and your microphone. And while we do that, if I can call up Spirit Synod and Thea Currie, please. Sandra?
Okay, I don't, you, you'll have, uh, you can hear me, but I don't have a video card.
Okay, okay, well, we certainly, you're, you're coming through on the audio. And please go ahead.
And, well, you don't need to see me, that's fine. But I, it is indeed an honor to be here today to do this. Um when I first met David in two thousand and five, it was a wonderful gentleman by the name of Ian Greaves that had introduced us. After speaking with David for about fifteen minutes and he asked me to be a part of this team, I definitely said, yes, I would do it. I presently sit on the Mayor's Accessibility Committee in Niagara Falls. And I know I am speaking on transportation today. Transportation is very, very important to me too. And it's always been very, very difficult to get, go up those steps on the buses. And in the early seventies, we had Niagara County. And that went from several years and wasn't perfect, but medical and jobs and students. And that is important too. From then, we developed the Niagara Specialized Transit, which was started in the eighties and it has done very, very well. And so last, as a gateway to church, it's but it's very, so all transportation has started transferred into the United States region. Do I think it was a good idea? Please tell them, it's really a great, uh, it's a great financial class. And the other transport for accessibility. And they are doing the best they can. The, the cost is nominal. It's only three dollars to ride the van. If you're within the two-hour period, you don't have to pay, you get a transfer and you can, you know, uh get back on the van and you don't have to pay anything extra. So we are coming along. Uh as AOD representative, uh just recently, I was in the big center children's playground. And I was asked to speak on what they did and I am very proud to say that John, uh, nature thinking, okay? And they have, what they decide, but they are going to be accessible. Hooray, hooray, hooray. It's about time. And let's get on with it and figure better things coming here. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you so much, Sandra. Okay, so we now have Thea, Thea Currie.
Hello, everybody. Uh my name is Thea Currie. I'm an accessible design strategist. I work with the architects and the building owners, the design teams and all levels of government creating accessibility standards above and beyond code. Why do we have to do that? Because the building code has been so resistant to change. It is not yet aligned with the Ontario Human Rights Code. So the Ontario Human Rights Code says buildings and spaces shall not discriminate against people. But the building code does not create environments that achieve that. That is the significant problem. It's a problem that architects, contractors, ministries and governments are battling with. This is a problem for people who don't understand the liability risk. And it's pushing a liability risk onto the architects and the people involved in projects.
Yeah.
So just a quick reminder, if you want to close here, please turn off your microphones. Thank you.
So while I could see that, my
Please turn on, you can turn off your microphone, please. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Thea.
Okay. Not much. So the problem is, if we try to push this onto procurements where we're adding additional contract requirements, that's not a part of the legislation. It always comes back to, where does it say that I have to do that? If it's not in legislation, if it's in a set of standards for municipality, that's not legislation. If it's in procurement policy, particularly in alternative financial procurement, that's not legislation. That is seen as being open to negotiation. So this puts it back onto, on uh human rights tribunals. This pushes the process onto people with disabilities. We have not seen the progress we should have seen. The delay has to stop. The wasting money on studies and talking to expert has to stop. We knew in two thousand and five what needed to be changed for the built environment. We already had it written down. If you go back and look at the City of London, Ontario's Facility Accessibility Design Standards, you will see that they had in detail what was required to be changed in the building code. So the building code must be rewritten top to bottom. We must insist that licensing for professionals and the education and continuing education has to be updated so that our incredible design professionals have the skills to create and use their amazing abilities to look beyond because there's nothing more sustainable, nothing more financially responsible and nothing smarter with a rapidly aging population and with an ever-growing and fastest and largest percentage of uh uh population having disabilities already. So please take that as an urgent call. Every day you wait is another building, another space that's inaccessible. Thank you.
Please welcome Valerie Lusted. And can I also call Vivina Jopber, who will be speaking? Please go ahead, Valerie.
My name is Valerie Lusted. Thank you to the organizers of today's event and especially the unwavering perseverance of David Lepowski and his colleagues at the AODA Alliance. I've been around long enough to remember the impacts of deinstitutionalization in the eighties in our local communities. I remember Warner Clark, then program manager for Ontario's Ministry of Long Term Care Division. He described the existing funding formula for services available to persons living with disabilities. The metaphor that Warner used at the time was one of a mushroom, where the large mushroom cap represented the bulk of the funding being available within institutional settings. Warner, who was an authentic proponent of community-based services, said, what needs to happen is we need to flip that mushroom upside down. We need to put the bulk of the funding into community-based services to better serve people with disabilities. I want to focus my three minutes today on the barriers faced by unpaid caregivers, because the upside down mushroom metaphor has never really happened. Community-based services are shortchanged, leaving unpaid caregivers to pick up the slack. These barriers are systemic in nature and rooted in ableism, which has been described as discrimination or social prejudice against people with disabilities. The barriers faced by unpaid caregivers exist because of the lack of political will, no matter which political party is in power. The barriers faced by unpaid caregivers fueling the lack of political will comes from ordinary citizens, our friends, our neighbors, our communities. They live in a world of denial, falsely believing that disability will not touch them in their lifetimes. These false beliefs fuel the lack of political will. Unpaid caregivers want to be able to continue to enhance the lives of their loved ones and to prevent higher costs to society. But we need remuneration, respite, and recognition. You see, I've been writing this particular spiel inside my head for decades. I come to you today as a humble, yet still idealistic unpaid caregiver, who like most unpaid caregivers is female, aging, unrecognized, and worried about the future. I come to you today as an unpaid caregiver to my husband, Richard, who has lived with quadriplegia for 45 plus years. I've sometimes fantasized about submitting an invoice to the government for unpaid services rendered over the 35 years of our marriage. Despite my husband's strong will, or perhaps because of it, I honestly feel that without my supplementary unpaid support, he undoubtedly would have been warehoused in a chronic care facility. In short, my unpaid caregiving has prevented his institutionalization, a cost of which would have been millions of dollars. I come to you today also as an unpaid caregiver to our son Evan McDonald, who lives with an invisible disability. Through my unpaid caregiving services to our son, Evan is able to participate in community volunteering, obtain his high school diploma, learn to drive, and work full time in a stable manual labor job. Without my unpaid caregiving services, Evan's trajectory would have been very different. He likely would have been living within a residential group home environment, again, at significantly high costs to taxpayers. Finally, I come to you today as a retired social worker with over 40 years of clinical practice experience within the healthcare field. Over the decades, I've supported thousands of unpaid caregivers like myself. More often than not, these are mothers, daughters, sisters, aunts. They too have freely given up their time in order to maximize the quality of life for their loved ones, but at what cost to themselves, their health, their own financial security. Thanks for allowing me to speak my truth.
Thank you so much, Valerie. I just want to make a quick announcement. There is a call for a vote, so we did lose our MTPs temporarily. We are recording this event. We will certainly encourage all MTPs to to watch this and review the video. So in the theme and spirit of being tenacious, we will press on. So please, I do invite Omar Reddeye to have me here. It's been a while. And I'd also like to call on Tammy Hill on Zoom. If you're there, please, so we'll, we'll ask Tammy Hill to turn on the video and the mic. And we will now hear from Omar. Thank you for joining us.
My pleasure. Great. Great to see you as well. And good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the AODA. My name is Omar Hairedi. That's O-M-A-R-H-A-RED-E-Y-E. I am a lawyer and a disability advocate and a board member of Spinal Cord Injury Ontario and chair of its advocacy committee. SEIO helped develop the AODA's accessibility standards. The Donovan Report highlights a critical gap in the AODA enforcement. Without stronger mechanisms, the vision of a fully accessible Ontario will fall short. The AODA enacted in 2005 aimed to make Ontario accessible by 2025. It sets standards for transportation, employment, and the built environment. Yet nearly 20 years later, progress has been slow. The 2019 review by former Lieutenant Governor David Onley found that many organizations remain non-compliant, leaving Ontarians with disabilities to face persistent barriers. Enforcement has relied too much on voluntary compliance, which has proven ineffective. Many organizations remain unaware of their obligations or lack the incentive to act. Accountability must become a priority. How can we achieve an accessible Ontario without accountability? A new approach is needed. First, we must commit to proactive enforcement. This includes bolstering the compliance and enforcement branch to conduct audits and impose penalties, or empowering existing human rights mechanisms, such as the Human Rights Tribunal of Ontario, to address violations. Second, public awareness must improve. Many organizations don't understand their responsibilities. Education campaigns, toolkits, and support from community groups can help, but education alone isn't enough. Action must follow. Finally, we must empower people with disabilities to enforce their rights. This means easier ways to report violations and access legal support. Accessibility is a right, not a privilege, but rights without enforcement are empty promises. Stronger enforcement will ensure Ontario becomes a truly inclusive place where everyone can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Omar. I'd like to call again Tammy Hill online. You can turn on your your video and your audio.
Can you hear me?
We don't hear you that well. We have to, perhaps there's a volume issue. Can you say something again? We can test it again.
All right. Can can you hear me now?
I think that's, I think that's good. Yeah. A lot of nods around the room. I think we're okay. Please go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. My name is Tammy. I'm a parent speaking on my experience within the public education system. My child has a neurological condition defined as childhood apraxia of speech and developmental coordination disorder. We haven't experienced many systematic barriers to accessing accommodations. Three minutes isn't enough time. Third-party support services worked with our board to create a transition to school plan that was ignored at school level with no parent communication and no responsible oversight. In our experience, individual certs currently have the freedom to make decisions on which child is deemed more deserving of IEPs with no transparency or accountability, causing disparity in the delivery of disability accommodations at school level. Our cert falsely claimed parents refused accommodations and all contact as a reason my son was not supported. No one questioned these claims. There are no protections in place to prevent this. I urge boards to require proof of parent involvement for every conversation about a child's disability in schools to avoid falsified records meant to save limited school resources. I was told since he is not behaviorally disruptive to the classroom, other children are more deserving of resources as a higher priority. They claim they had no mandate to support my son, as he is not technically considered behind or to be struggling regardless of disability until grade three. My child was unable to communicate intelligibly, struggled socially, and was not tested or included in school with his disability in mind. Teachers complained they were at a loss. They lacked the training and the resources. Requests for AAC tools and devices were refused. Request to meet with the SLP to learn about apraxia or discuss it in the classroom was refused on the basis of special treatment. Inappropriate requests for medical information were made on several occasions, including one where the staff requested all medical history, dates, and contacts to personally investigate whether his needs were met at home, as they believed he should have been fixed by now. And do I not know how difficult his life is? The code guarantees the right to equal treatment in education without discrimination, yet the application at school level is not fair due to board policies. We have faced obstacles, such as an outright refusal of service, on the basis that apraxia can be considered a speech issue which schools are not required to support. This creative application of loopholes at school level using interpretations of exceptionalities allow them to justify acknowledging the undue hardship my child experiences while citing no mandate of responsibility to accommodate him. I am urging that the definition of recognized exceptionalities in all schools be revised to include communication disorders with funding that accurately meets current demand. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we can now invite Kate Welsh to speak here in the room. And for those online, I'd like to call Barbara Payne, just to turn on your your video and your mic. And we'll get to you shortly. And also in here, I don't think you're here, but Poldulia Bailey.
Oh, she's in the waiting room on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if
And Poldulia will will follow Barbara Payne as well. So Kate, please go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Kate Welsh. I am a sick and disabled queer educator, artist, and mental health counselor. I grew up in and out of hospitals. I have lived experience of having a disability that used to be invisible, but has become visible for the past 10 years with the use of mobility aids. I am passionate about the connection between mental health and increased illness or disability, specifically how we can mitigate this. In my independent private practice, I support sick and disabled people with their mental health. I see a deep connection between the ableism someone experiences and their physical and mental wellness. I see the AODA as an opportunity our society has in working toward actively combating deep ingrained ableism. I'm here today to talk about how vital the existence and ongoing improvement of the AODA is to our mental and physical wellbeing, because its existence tell us that we matter. But the AODA was a promise, and here we are at the cusp of the moment when the promise was supposed to be realized. And yet we still and yet we still depend on public kindness for our basic humanity. Do I have access to a public washroom? Can I grab a coffee with a friend like anyone else? Can I get into a building at a new job? Do I have access to be a part of community and society? The AODA needs to be fully realized with proper enforcement as a starting place toward a world with less ableism and more disability inclusion. When my clients, who are all disabled and chronically ill, share with me that they are struggling with their mental health, we unpack it. Often, we find that it is ableism that is at the root of their low self-esteem, social isolation, or anxiety. Structural ableism that is a result of a combination of inaccessible environments, negative stereotypes and attitudes, and being treated badly by health and social service professionals leads to internalized ableism. That leads to poor mental health and further disablement. And Ontario, if Ontario can better implement and enforce the AODA, our society will be better for disabled people, and we will be able to live happier, healthier lives. And as a reminder, we all have bodies and minds, and therefore, we will all become disabled in our lives. Disability is part of human diversity. Let's make the world a better place for future generations.
So just a quick announcement. So we're going to be grateful. And fortunately, welcome back. We have MTP meets, apologies, MTP meets, Ashley Kent, Lancy, and John Fraser, who joined us. So with that, I'd like to turn to folks on Zoom. And here in the room, we will ask Yanka Doll, or Yanka is here. We'll call her folks on Zoom here. Fiona Copley, if Fiona's in the room, please, please make your way up. And we'll, we'll now turn to the folks on Zoom. So Barbara Payne, are you, are you there? We ask Poldia Bay to turn on video and mic as well in preparation. Barbara, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me all right? Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Payne. Thank you for inviting us to speak at this milestone hearing. Except for two years in the eighties, I've been a resident of Ontario. Due to my disability and the ever increasing new barriers to accessibility since 2008, recently had to flee like a refugee within my own country, unable to be at most indoor and outdoor areas of it, to Newfoundland. I live here alone, ripped from my lifetime of people and places in Ontario. I may never see them again in person because currently traveling is dangerous for me. My disability is due to chronic, usually invisible, physical illness that is often abbreviated EHS. It's exposures to the artificial radiation that operates as wireless connectivity and to the byproduct radiation emissions near electrical wiring and appliances all physically debilitate me temporarily or more permanently. I experience muscle weakness and other serious adverse physical effects, cardio, neuro, hormonal, breathlessness, improper sleep. The problem is those artificial radiations, not me. If I'm able to practice prudent avoidance of that electrosmog, the serious adverse events don't occur. Plus, as David points out, providing accessibility accommodations generally improves the environment for everyone else, too. Indeed, I wouldn't wish this disabling injury slash illness on my worst enemy. Giving us accessibility to places is doable and is sometimes zero cost. Ahem, compliance with AODA and enforcement of compliance, yes, please, please. My urgent recommendations to Ontario government regarding accessible communication technologies are: dust off the Care Now report from your task force on environmental health. I guess the glossary didn't include a definition for the word "now." Include us in all accessibility discussions so we are enabled to tell our stories and solutions in conversations that enable understanding so we can at least have sanctuary at our homes without fighting for it, daily begging for it. Wirelessly communicating utility meters must be optional, not mandatory. Non-wireless communication tools are essential at public places for emergency and other use and for information and wayfinding. Educate and empower all your municipalities to uphold rights we already have yet are denied. The disrespect and worse that currently arises in public and in government is frankly grossly discriminatory and cruel. Mandate Public Health Ontario to immediately learn from medical clinicians, along with ongoing consultation with friendly, enthusiastic, not-for-profit organizations like Electromagnetic Pollution Illnesses Canada Foundation, to widely and publicly ongoing promote and update habits of practice safe tech on par with practice safe sex, and e-hygiene on par with personal hygiene, and mandate learning and deployment of electrosmog reduction options during renovation, new builds, operations, policies, and designations of all public and private places. Thank you very much for your ongoing active support for myself and the estimated at least five and the estimated at least 500,000 Ontarians with EHS who suffer as I do. Thank you very much, you're epic.
Thank you so much, Barbara. So we now have in the room with us Yanka.
No, this is Fiona. Fiona.
Fiona. Welcome, Fiona.
Thank you.
And if I could just take a moment and just ask Odilia Bay and Lisa Cohen over Zoom, just turn on your video and your mic. And you'll be on list and you'll be on shortly. So with that, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm speaking today as an Ontario teacher, the parent of two little girls with special needs, and as a member of the parent-led advocacy group Ontario Parents for Education Support. My message is simple. Due to a decline in special education services across Ontario, children are not receiving the support they need and deserve. We know that early intervention is essential for those with special needs to succeed. Yet over the past decade, we have seen devastating cutbacks to special education. Under the guise of inclusion, specialized programs are being shut down and the criteria for the programs that remain are being raised. At the same time, school boards are drastically cutting support staff. My six-year-old daughter is on the autism spectrum and has ADHD along with severe anxiety. She's in grade one and has faced significant difficulties in getting the support she is entitled to since she started junior kindergarten. Her school has one half-time special needs assistant for about 160 students. My four-year-old daughter has Down's Syndrome. She should have started junior kindergarten in September, but the class she should be in has two students diagnosed with autism and one other student with Down's syndrome, plus 28 other children. The one half-time special needs assistant at the school spends the morning trying to give patchwork support to the absolute neediest kids from junior kindergarten through grade six. In the afternoon, the children are left to fend for themselves. I am a teacher who has spent the last 15 years mostly in kindergarten and special education. I've seen firsthand the decline in support staff and specialized programs and classrooms. I see the direct impact these cutbacks have on students with special needs and their families, but also on the other students, the teachers, and everyone else working in the schools. I have seen teachers crying in the staff room because they want to help every child, but they just can't do it alone. Our school system must properly support all of its students. Children with special needs deserve an equitable education and right now, the system is denying them this. Everyone involved in the hollowing out of special education services should be ashamed of themselves. The impact of denying children the support they need to develop into their best adult selves has dire impacts for our society. What is happening is crumbling the infrastructure of one of the backbones of Canadian identity, a strong public education system. The Ontario government must provide adequate funding for special education services by creating funding packages that are only allowed to be spent on hiring adequate numbers of EAs and SNAs to meet the actual needs of students. The best result would be one support person per class so that students needing support can receive it proactively rather than only when they are in crisis. If a particular class doesn't need support at a given time, the support staff could provide extra support in classes where the needs are higher. The current model of barely any support staff and increasing numbers of children with extra needs is not sustainable. Children with special needs are being abandoned in our school systems. This needs to change. Inclusion without support is abandonment.
I'd also like to note that we're now at a full panel, so thank you. So we have some speakers on Zoom. Do we have someone lined up on Zoom? Odilia Bay? Or what we do?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak today. My name is Odilia Bay. I am a lawyer, a PhD candidate, and I also have an invisible disability. I have multiple sclerosis. Today, I'm speaking in my capacity as the co-founder of the Canadian Association of Lawyers with Disabilities. We are a national organization of lawyers, paralegals, and other legal practitioners. Our members are very diverse with respect to our experiences of disability, disabledment, and legal practice. Last year, something exciting happened, or potentially exciting. The province of Ontario opened a new state-of-the-art courthouse in downtown Toronto, the Armory Street Courthouse. Only the promise of an accessible Ontario that we've come to expect or hope for under the AODA is, well, sort of to be found here, maybe. The building is sadly full of access barriers. Some are minor irritants and some create serious potential for physical harm. All communicate to the disabled people who both use and serve the justice system, but they are either forgotten or ignored, or even worse, not actually valued. We had high hopes for this courthouse because in 2024, it's sadly a reality that in many of Ontario courthouses, our members and the public face challenges at things like safely navigating courts, sitting behind council tables, gowning with their colleagues, or even just getting food in from the courts where they work independently. And all of this is happening in 2024. One of the most pressing issues we face right now as jurists and officers of the court is what's known as access to justice. Put simply, access to justice prompts us to work towards ensuring that people can actually get the help they need with the legal problems they face. Everything from advice, hearings, decisions, enforcement. But access to justice is meaningless. Accessible justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Odilia. Thank you for that. So we'll now go back in the room here. And I also want to call on folks on Zoom. So Lisa Cohen and Madeline Austin, if you can turn on your videos and your mic. And now we'll go to the room.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I am Rahima, and I want to address some relationships between disability and aging and the increasing need for retrofitting existing housing. I was on the city's waitlist for 26 years. I now live at Own Housing Cooperative for Seniors. Own is more accessible than my previous place of residence, but I do not live in an accessible unit. And I use a power wheelchair. None are available to me and the waitlist are very long. Club housing provides opportunities for independence and socialization that make a real difference in being able to stay longer at home without the need to go to long-term care. This is vital for mental and physical health, but there's a lack of funding for programs and facility modifications to assist with disability that increases with aging. Because living in a housing cooperative is supportive community. We are able to stay in our homes longer than in most rental housing. However, there are no grants available at this time for renters to retrofit our building for more accessibility or modified apartments or common spaces. What is needed is universal design changes to the building code and related legislation and housing subsidy. Where is our government's support for seniors and people with disability as we age in place? In conclusion, it was the night before the holidays and all through Queen's Park, not an MPP was stirring, not even a mouse. Soon it would be 2025, but whatever happened to our AODA? Because we are not going away. Thank you.
Do we have anyone online who is ready to present? Yanka Dahl.
Thank you. My name is Bianca Dahl. I'm an assistant professor of anthropology at the University of Toronto Scarborough campus. I was born with a genetic condition that resulted in me losing the ability to walk independently in 2014. Given the time constraints, I'm going to speak from my own perspective as somebody who's faced mobility barriers. But the main problem that I see with the AODA seems resonant with what everyone here today has been saying, which is that it's toothless, that it reduces accessibility to a checklist rather than embracing it as an ethos. When I first met the Honorable David Onley in a food court at the University of Toronto Scarborough campus, he did two things. The first one was that he swapped scooters and encouraged me to spin wheelies in the hallways of the humanities way to establish the superior turning radius of his three-wheeled model. But the second thing he did was to encourage me to request an accessible door to be added to the wing of my offices at UTSC. They had installed it. There was none installed in the actual suite of offices. So anytime I wanted to enter into the hallway to access my office, I had to somehow kind of maneuver with my scooter. They did, in fact, install it and informed me it costs several thousand dollars to do so. But the technician who installed this accessible door placed it as far away from both my office and the elevator as possible and in such a way that I couldn't actually reach it from my scooter. So it was completely useless. You know, the helpful wheelchair ramps from Stopgap, I live down kind of Queen Street West area. They're a huge support. They allow people that are wheelchair-bound or in scooters to be able to get in and out of stores. But the problem with the Stopgap ramps is that they actually reduce the amount of usable sidewalk space. So on lovely, busy summer Saturdays on Queen Street, I often, when I was reliant on my wheelchair or my motorized scooter, I couldn't actually get into, to even access the ramps, right? There just wasn't enough space in the sidewalk for it. So I think most people with accessibility issues will resonate with these kinds of daily challenges. But accessibility, it can't be a temporary fix. That doesn't work. And the standard excuse, which is that it's hard to implement new measures for accessibility into a city that was built and designed before these regulations were called into place, that excuse doesn't cut it because changes can be made. The anthropologist and physician Paul Farmer once argued that people in positions of marginalization or poverty or disability should not just be given equality, right? The same access to healthcare as everybody else, but what he called a preferential option. So if you're very poor, this should be healthcare and food. If you're disabled, this should be, well, I actually wonder what this should be. What, wheelchair ramps and a sidewalk with enough space to actually access the ramps? Or a wheelchair button you can actually press from a wheelchair? So in this guise, the most basic forms of access that people in my circumstances have been requesting, like asking for an accessible door you can actually reach, they're not just about equality, right? They're not even, they're just the most basic baseline, right? We're not even asking for the preferential option in a world that might, you know, think about our needs and try to make it a little bit easier on us. And this seems like a task that should have already been completed by the original 2025 AODA goals. So honestly, I'm grateful to listen to this forum and to hear everyone's insights, but it is a stain on our province and on the memory of people like the Lieutenant Governor Onley that it has not yet made this access available to all of us. Enough excuses.
We now back to the room here.
Bernard.
Bernard, welcome Bernard. Please go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Bernard Mesa. I want to speak today about an issue that profoundly impacts students with disabilities across Ontario. We're talking about ODSP clawbacks to post-secondary education grants for students with disability. Specifically, I'm referring to provincial deductions applied to federal disability grants like the Canadian Student Grant for students with disabilities. These grants are meant to help students manage the extra costs of participating in post-secondary education when one has a disability. However, under the current D.C. government, ODSP treats these grants as income, deducting the funding dollar for dollar. This policy is affecting up to 6,500 students with disabilities a year that receive both ODSP and OSAP. Many myself included that faced severe deductions that it became impossible to afford textbooks, school supplies, or even transportation to classes. In my own case, $3,750 was improperly deducted a term, that's $900 a month, was clawed back improperly by ODSP according to their own policy. The impact of these clawbacks is devastating. Many students only learn about the deductions months into their program, making responsible budgeting nearly impossible. Some are forced to drop out altogether. Even worse, while most students win their cases at ODSP tribunals these days or through court appeals, it can take up to a year to do so, to resolve this. Meanwhile, ODSP now is not even bothering to send legal representatives to defend these deductions in court, yet still forces disabled students into grueling litigation to keep the funding they were promised. This policy has existed since the Doug Ford, D.C.-led government took office. While similar practice was rumored during the Mike Arisera, these current clawbacks are indisputable. Inconsistent interpretations within ODSP itself exacerbate the problem. In my case, two managers at ODSP couldn't even agree on whether these clawbacks to federal disability grants were valid. This agreement alone added several weeks to the process and nearly caused me to miss another term. Even after an eternal review reversed the deductions, one manager delayed my access to funds for three weeks, continuing the claim that it was invalid. Making matters even worse, missing even one term can seriously impact educational plans, especially in programs like mine where semesters are staggered. For me, it meant adding an entire year to my studies. These clawbacks are unjust and counterproductive. We should empower students with disabilities, not penalize them for seeking education. I have spoken to many students across this province who have had to relinquish their dreams of attaining the kind of post-secondary education that will help them find meaningful and gainful employment throughout their lives. It's time that this current provincial government abandons these needless clawbacks and barriers and does the right thing in supporting post-secondary students with disability rather than seeing these federal grants as just another cash grab to put against their bottom line. It is time for real reform of provincial student clawbacks to federal disability education grants. I thank you for this time.
Thank you so much, Bernard. So I believe that we have Melissa Trummerz online. She has signed off. Okay, okay. So do we have Lisa Cohen? No, we have Victoria and Irene. Okay. I'd like to welcome Victoria. Turn on your video and mic, please. And Irene as well, if you can do that, as it'll be, you'll follow. Victoria, please, please go ahead. Irene?
Hi there.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you for the panel.
So can we begin with our-
Can I start?
There we go, please do.
Thank you to the panel for this opportunity. Barriers that I face as a disabled person in Ontario are ubiquitous and annoying. Over seven years ago, I had to leave my home in Toronto to seek a safer environment in the countryside as I had to significantly reduce my exposure to handmade electromagnetic fields from telecom towers, antennas, and Wi-Fi virtually all throughout the city. Approximately 13 years ago, around the time that 4G was launched across Ontario, I became ill with various symptoms which debilitated me over a short period of time. However, as my family physician of over 30 years was unable to diagnose my condition due to lack of awareness, I continued to suffer by unknowingly exposing myself to environments at my workplace, at home, and pretty much all public spaces that exacerbated my symptoms, putting me in great danger. Later on, I heard about electromagnetic illness, only specialists at the time who was testing, diagnosing, and treating patients. Finally, after a year-long waitlist, I had my first appointment with Dr. Rena Bray at the Environmental Clinic Women's College Hospital. I was diagnosed with electromagnetic field hypersensitivity- I was diagnosed with electromagnetic field hypersensitivity and advised to avoid wireless radiation as much as possible. By this time, I was no longer employed as my condition progressed and it was clear that I would likely never be able to reach my workplace of over 20 years due to the high levels of electromagnetic radiation and wifi throughout the building. My workplace was a barrier to accessibility for me, as was my apartment in Toronto, covered with cellular antennas on the rooftop. Following a proper diagnosis, which took several years to receive, I was finally able to apply for ODSP. Up to that point, I had limited income, unable to work for six years due to my health condition. Accessibility begins with proper identification of the disability. In other words, affected Ontarians should be able to be properly diagnosed. As Dr. Magda Havas, Professor of Environmental Studies at Trent University, one of the world's foremost experts on non-ionizing radiation, and advocate for safer technology, said, quote, "We need resources for research on how to diagnose and treat those who have become ill, education and medical training, since this isn't taught in medical schools. Green zones with safe housing. Some people with the sensitivity sleep in their cars in the woods, and this can be life-threatening, especially during winter. We need to accommodate them in hospitals and schools and their working environments by demonstrating how to reduce exposure in these environments," unquote. According to the 2017 Task Force on Environmental Health Report, people with environmental sensitivities, which includes electromagnetic hypersensitivity, are significantly more likely to have unmet healthcare needs. Living with debilitating conditions can result in poverty and homelessness. When I moved out of Toronto initially, I experienced some relief, but that was short-lived as the rollout of 5G began in coordination with the EON cell network project. I am now considering where I can move yet again to escape. Unfortunately, the next phase of this initiative, Ontario Connects, aims at speeding up construction and removing barriers for high-speed internet projects. Please understand, this comes at the cost of placing more barriers for people like myself who will continue to suffer and be displaced by the virtually inescapable exposure to the electromagnetic fields from these projects. I am asking for your assistance in seeing the immediate implementation of the 12 HES committee recommendation on radio frequency electromagnetic radiation and the health of Canadians made in 2015, which have yet to be acted on by the Government of Canada. While Ontario aims to better connect its citizens virtually, it's dislocated people like me from society in a safe place to live within this province as it isolates us from our communities and livelihoods by exacerbating our impairments and forcing us further away in desperate attempts to simply save our lives. With this in mind, I ask you to consider, how is Ontario accessible to all? What measures are being taken to make the environment safe and therefore accessible for my disability, electromagnetic hypersensitivity, and illness? Thank you.
Thank you so much Irene. So my understanding is that we are down to our last two speakers and they are both on Zoom. So I'd like to call on Victoria and Melissa. If you can also just have your video and your microphone on. Melissa, you'll be our last speaker. So Victoria, please, please join us. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you well.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Victoria Ojubui. I'm an advocate for seniors in my building and the people in the close and community. I came here today to shine a light on building code. I live in social housing. To them, AODA is a joke. Listening to everyone today, I realize this is a battle that everyone with visible and invisible disability need to continue fighting. Accessible door. What is that? 30 years later, seniors are struggling to open the door that separate the North and South to get to the elevator just to go out. How can you turn the knob of a fire door and get yourself through the door with your scooter, motorized wheelchair? Every single day, I'm hearing a voice say, "Please help me. Please help me. Help me open the door." As a person with brain injury and vision loss, I'm racing out of my apartment to use my body to turn the door open for seniors. It's not too much to ask that all the accessibility doors be equipped with liver system. We're no longer in the 80s. The knob system is not viable for people with ten disability. Fighting the system in itself is like merry-go-round. Going from MPP to AODA is that telephone. 2025 is approaching. Building code needs to be taken seriously. Accessibility is needed for people like myself, seniors, visible and invisible, to leave their house, to be part of the society. Isolation is a problem. Right now, if I want to go out, I have to ask my neighbor, "Can you please turn the door for me so I could get through?" Once you leave your apartment, another barrier is community space. Nowhere for seniors or people with disability to take a rest. Benses is needed in the community. So when we finally get out there, we have a place to rest and then continue on our journey. As I'm speaking to you today, I ask myself, what is worse? Having brain injury, vision loss, or not be able to leave my place without struggling? I'll say accessibility is actually worse than the actual disability. I'm hoping that our MPP and our government hold all these buildings accountable. Disability is our right. I mean, accessibility is our right. And that needs to happen now. Thank you so much for giving me this time to vent.
Thank you, Victoria. And that leads us to our last speaker today, our last presenter. Melissa, are you with us here?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Yeah, welcome. Welcome, Melissa. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I appreciate being included today. In 2010, I was severely injured by a telecommunications antenna during the 4G fallout. I was left medically disabled by exposures to electromagnetic fields, forcing me to give up my wonderful 25-year career as an airline pilot. For the past 12 years, I've been on paid medical leave from my company, who have been very supportive and occupational health doctors who recognize my disability. I'm involved with multiple nonprofits volunteering my time when I'm well enough to help many others. There are many points that need to be addressed on this issue, but today I will be discussing housing. People with this disability like myself have no control of their environment and are vulnerable to further injury and suffering. What was always an extremely difficult task to find and afford safe housing has evolved into a humanitarian crisis due to the present 5G and further cell tower rollout going on right now across Canada. They are filling in gaps, leaving no place for any of us to live. Firstly, I've been forced to vent in my home multiple times, often suddenly from wireless exposures coming from cell antenna, utility meters, and my neighbors. These problems are still reoccurring in my present life, and we have to live again. It just never ends. When at my worst, I had to leave my family and live in Green Bank, West Virginia, the world's only radio-free zone, for most of two and a half years. I lived in a 200-year-old cabin and then spent five months living in a tent, deep in the woods, deep in the winter. Stable people from all over the world come to Green Bank for refuge. We have no safe place like this in Canada. In fact, when I went to speak to Industry Canada or ISID back in 2012 with Frank Clegg, former President of Microsoft Canada, about creating a safe zone, we were told that we would not be allowed to have any such areas in Canada, no areas without any cell towers, and that they would legally block us if we tried to set one up. Her change does not adequately describe how I felt when those... Fuck us, trying to protect ourselves and in such a huge country. Today, I would be moving to rural areas east of Toronto, but they are building hundreds of new cell towers there. There are people I know who are actively being displaced from their homes in that area already. How will I ensure if I do find safe zones in that rainfield? This housing issue has become such a crisis that people with disability are accessing these terms. What I need, what we need, is for the government to help the people who are reporting injuries from this flawed technology and not just sending a phone letter. I need our federal government to finally implement the 12 still outstanding HES recommendations from 2015. I need my provincial government to accommodate us with analog mechanical utility meters that will further injure us or force anyone out of their home. I need protected natural areas where we can all go outside safely. I need access to safe medical care for us in hospital and safe nursing homes for us when we're elderly and will eventually need care. I need all levels of government to protect us from further exposures on our own properties and in our own homes so we can try to regain our health, hopefully work again, participate in the world again, and just be able to put our lives as normally as possible. And we need to see action now before there is literally no place left in Canada for any of us to go. Thank you again for allowing me to share my thoughts with you today. If given the opportunity, would you like to help with finding solutions for the problems I just outlined?
Thank you so much, Melissa. And that is it for today. And we still have a couple of minutes to spare. So David would like to say a few words and...
Okay.
Don't use the microphone, David.
Don't use it, David. Mess yourself the video out. Oh, okay. You mean I have to overcome my shyness and speak Latin? What does it all add up to? People with every kind of disability, in every aspect of life, from education to transportation to employment to healthcare, all still facing too many disability barriers. Lauren McDonald talked about the sad passing last year of a gentleman named Sam Savona. When we met 30 years ago this Friday unexpectedly in that committee room in this building at the meeting to create this movement, nobody wanted to be the chair. We all said, "Yeah, we need a movement. Yeah, who's going to lead it?" Well, I didn't want to do it. Nobody wanted to do it. Sam took it on. Sam Savona was the original chair of what became the coalition that brought this movement. Later, expanded to include myself and my friend Bob Betten as co-chairs, and then eventually me as chair. But it's the contributions of individuals in this room, individuals who were in that room and who do not live to this day, together have proven us to spark warbird. I want to just share a couple of thoughts before we wrap up. The first is, all of this is going to help fuel what we launch next year as the campaign following January 1st, 2025. What we want your ideas. You can write us at aodafeedback@gmail.com. But we also want you on the team. Our coalition is made up of supporters all over the place. And the way you connect up, people say, "How do I get involved?" Just sign up to get our emails and you're in. That's all it takes. So if you're in the room or watching online and you don't yet get our updates, go to this website, www.aodalliance.org. And right there, there is a sign-up link. Sign up. Put in your email address. Sometimes our servers inadvertently cut people out after some time. You stop getting our updates. If you've got a whole two days without one, sign up again. Because, believe me, we do upwards of 100 updates a year. And in almost every update, there's going to be a heading that says, "How you can help." We're a virtual coalition. You are all the foot soldiers by taking those recommendations and put them into action. I was asked a question at our news conference today, and I didn't give a good enough answer, by the way. But it was a fair question, which is, "Well, if we miss the 2025 deadline, well, what do you want the new deadline to be?" You know what the answer is? Because I shouldn't have given it. The new deadline should be 2025. That's what we were guaranteed in law. And we don't want one word of the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act to end it. Not one word. Because the law doesn't go away on the 1st of January any more than there's the guarantees of equality to people with disabilities in the Charter of Rights in the Human Rights Code. And we want to work with every single government and every single politician that takes power or is in power to make sure they live up to those, including us getting to what we were promised as soon after January 1st as can be achieved. So should we be pessimistic? And the answer is no. At every stage of this process over 30 years, people questioned whether it was going to be possible for us to move forward. I remember people wondering whether people with disabilities would even rally in support of the Disabilities Act. They've got so many other issues. They wondered whether disability service organizations could work with consumer groups because they had fractious relations. They wondered whether we could ever get a bill for the legislature. When one was introduced in 1998, it was only three pages long. We got it lapped out of the legislature within 17 days. When that happened, some doubted that we'd ever get another bill. Everyone was brought in in 2001 by the Mike Harris government. It was too weak, but it was passed. Some people thought, "Well, the disability community will give up." We didn't. We got a promise from then NDP leader Howard Hampton and Dalton McGinty that if they were elected in 2003, they'd pass a better law. A lot of people thought, "Well, they're politicians. They won't do it." Credit to Premier McGinty. He got elected and he did it. And he did it on time and on target. And while we have seen sluggish progress, the fact of the matter is, we can't... We've got to remember, we are further ahead than we would have been, a lot further ahead. So what do we do? We go from here with a couple of things. First, a huge thank you. Thank you to all of you who came in person. Thank you to all of our volunteers. Thank you to everybody who's attending online. Thank you to the people who are watching. Thank you to the MPPs who escaped a boring vote just to have them listen to us. Thank you to Celeese and Paul Mason and your staff and your colleagues for doing this and doing it in the spirit of nonpartisanship that they know is a watchword of how we work, even though this is a very partisan place. And thank you to our panelists who are listening in a spirit of nonpartisanship. And it's wrong to ever single anyone out, and you should never do it. Absolutely never. And with that, I'm going to break the rule. I have a huge thank you to Bruce MacIntosh. Bruce MacIntosh, a sir... I think he's one of the finest human beings I've had the privilege of knowing. Has been along this ride since we started talking last spring about, "What are we going to do for our 30th anniversary?" And there is no technical problem he won't tackle, no matter how buried it is on the internet to find the... on the internet to find the solution. The only other thanks is to his wife, Flora, who is not here and who is going to kill me if she's not home by dinnertime tonight. And if I do not, unless I do not, call again for the rest of the week. But Bruce has done a phenomenal job in making sure everything worked, and we could not have done it without him. But I truly believe that every one of us contributes. Every one of you contributes. By every step you take, every committee you sit on, every deputation you make, every email you send, those are all part of the battle. Now, I want to end with a fortune cookie. Back in May, May 10th of 2005, the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act was coming before the legislature for vote on the third reading. And we knew it was going to pass. It was a majority government. We knew it was going to pass because all the parties had announced they were going to support it. So we knew it was going to pass unanimously. This was a sort of a ceremonial formality. But a really exciting day. And before I went to the legislature, I went out for lunch with a buddy. And we have to go for Chinese food. And I got a fortune cookie here. Of course, fortune cookies, they're fortune cookies. So I took out the fortune, and of course, it was in print, not in braille because the cookie was too small. And I passed it to my friend and I said, "What do you want to say?" I later quoted it at the press conference that day after the AODA passed. It said, "Every great accomplishment is at first impossible." 30 years ago, it seemed impossible that we could get legislation passed. Today, after 20 years, while we've had some progress, it might seem to you impossible that we can achieve an accessible Ontario. But you know what? Every great accomplishment is at first impossible. So let's get it done. Thank you all very much.